It's a problem with, um. This is what I keep saying, this is exactly what I was afraid of. Are we ready? Are you guys ready? I'm gonna call this meeting to order, please stand to salute the nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, and indivisible.
In attendance this evening are supervisors Fisher, Agizio, Cassiola, Flair, and Barney. In addition Township Manager Don Genuso, Jack King Assistant Township Manager and Director of Planning, Sean Bukavinski Chief of Police, Fire Chief Noel McMullin, Engineer Dan Dizeroth of Gateway Engineers, and Township Solicitor Attorney Gretchen Moore. Comments will be taken at this time for any item to be voted on by the board that appears on the agenda. General Township comments or questions will be addressed after the Board of Supervisors' discussion of all business. Please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Okay, moving on. Don't forget Cecil Township Parks and Recreation Board is sponsoring a movie night on Saturday, June tenth, from dusk until ten PM in the park. The movie, if I heard correctly, is Sonic Two. Cecil Township Historical Society will meet on Wednesday, June twenty first, twenty twenty-three, at seven PM in the meeting room of the municipal building. Jim Zamiska will present Generational Lens, a very thoughtful but funny look back at things our grandparents and parents did that would, that we would never think of doing today. That actually sounds really funny. Muse Fireworks, Sunday, July second, on the ball field at dusk. I highly recommend them, if you've not seen them, they're amazing. Discussion items. Number one is an update on the public works facility.
Evening, everybody, just a brief update on the public works project.
Dan, I don't think your microphone's working.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
That's better?
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, what happened last month in May, uh, this, this being our public works building site here, little different orientation, this is Rising Road here on this side. This is the building outlined in yellow. Uh, the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing packages were approved. Uh, that means that, uh, we can begin with that construction. Uh, West Penn Power, uh, is working on the three-phase extension. And, uh, they are getting, doing some tree trimming related to that. Uh, but there's no easements required, which is good. Uh, Yule has started the, uh, foundation installation and is approximately sixty percent complete with that task. Uh, Jay Stewart, uh, who's working on the sanitary sewer, has completed a good portion of the sanitary sewer work. And, uh, that's on your agenda tonight for our progress payment. There's also a progress payment for Yule construction tonight on the agenda. And that's all been verified and ready for payment. And then the, uh, first payment to Schultz Electric, uh, sub, uh, one of the, uh, uh, other GCs on the, or the other, contractors on the project, uh, their first payment. And then, as I said, there's a payment for, uh, Jay Stewart tonight. The upcoming tasks will be completion of the foundation. Uh, they're then going to begin masonry and prep for the building slab installation. Uh, the utilities, uh, P American, uh, is anticipating to mobilize this week. Uh, West Penn Power, uh, is also going to install their three-phase extension. And, uh, they'll be paving, uh, on Klinger Road, uh, to be comple, to be completed, uh, once the water line is installed. Uh, mechanical, electrical, and fire protection contracts, uh, they'll be into mobilize to the site and do the underground work. And, uh, there's continued submissions on the stuff. The only issue we have at this time with anything is really just the lead time on equipment. And, uh, some of that stuff, uh, has been ordered already, but it's, uh, some of it's as much as twelve months out. So that's the report, if there's any questions from the board?
Dan?
Yes, sir, Ron.
Why didn't we just come straight out of that manhole when we wouldn't have had to touch the road at all?
For the sanitary?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'd have to, I, I don't have the detail on it, Ron, I'll check into it and get back to you.
I mean, it was six foot deep, they wouldn't have had to touch the paving at all.
It, it was always determined by the, the sewer authority, I, 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 I don't, I don't know the back and forth, but we, we went back and forth on approvals for that, but I'll check and let you know.
I mean, that was ridiculous, that's a lot of extra money.
I, I wouldn't disagree, but I, I, I guess the side of the road that they wanted to be on, and I'm not sure what else was involved in the decision making, but I'll find out.
Okay.
Any other questions by board members? Thank you, Dan. Are you good, or?
I'm good, thank you.
You're welcome. Um, number two is discuss proposed use for Hendersonville Field. Um, last week Supervisors Flair, Barney, and myself sat in a meeting with JR Gardner, who owns the Armory. Um, for those of you that don't know, the Armory, at their own expense and time, had fixed up Hendersonville Field. I apologize, I meant to have pictures, before and after pictures for tonight, um, and I didn't get them. So if you want to see them, I can show you, um, after the meeting. But they did a phenomenal job, they even added a batting cage, um, to that field, and it looks great. Um, I think you would agree with me. Darlene and Ron, um, they approached us this past week about the potential of utilizing, and JR, if you want to step to the microphone so that you can jump in at any point, um, about the potential of utilizing, um, Hendersonville Field for Little League baseball, or?
Correct.
Sorry?
Yes.
Um, so if you want to give a quick, like, brief summary of what you explained to, to us about it, about your intended use for it, and then we can let the other board members who aren't able to hear, hear.
Yeah, so I run the Armory Youth Center in Cannonsburg, we've been renovating the facility for the last ten years. Bringing life back to that building, it was dilapidated. Raised a bunch of money to do all the projects, we run after-school program, a wrestling program, uh, all kinds of programs there in Cannonsburg, and so we also have Armory Baseball Program. And so we have numerous travel teams. And so, uh, that is the field that we use for one of our travel teams is Hendersonville Field. And so fixed it up, made it real nice, batting cage, all that stuff. And so, uh, one thing that, uh, has always been done is Little League Baseball, it was huge. Back in the day, it was the first, you know, thing that was going on, and there's the Little League World Series, you can watch it on ESPN. Uh, it's very well televised, and so, um, what would happen is it's based on zip codes, and so Collier Township had the zip code for Canhamack. So all the players from Canhamack would go over to Collier and try out for their Little League team. And so there's never been Little League Baseball here, and so, um, the guy who was running that Little League stepped away, moved away, so the zip code is up. Uh, so we could grab the zip code, bring it back to Canhamack Cecil Township, um, and create a Little League program. We would need a field to host the Little League program, which is what would be great to do, to raise all, I do all the fundraising, raise all the money, turn that field into a, a beautiful field. Um, and whether that's turf or whatever, just make it into a top-notch premier Little League host facility and run Little League out of there. Um, and so that's what our hope is to do.
So it was just a, at our meeting, I can't, was it Thursday last week? Um, they, he gave just like a high level of presentation, obviously if there's an agenda item to vote on it, whether we want to allow him to do it in the future, but, um, we would need to get Gretchen involved to write up kind of a contract, um, so that we would know, like, if he's fundraising the money, who's responsible for the scheduling of the field, which would be you, um, just so that it's in writing and, and clear and clean for all of us. Um, does any board mem, do any board members have any questions?
No, we're also looking at...
Well, no, no, let's just focus on Hendersonville Field right now, and then, once we get ahold of Ed, then we can...
I have a question as far as, uh, the legality, the financial cost is, the town, Cecil Township residents, uh, won't be on the, for any financial costs for that field. And also, if Gretchen is going to do the contract, they will be liable for her expenses, is that?
Well, no.
Contract?
No, because her goal in the contract would be to protect us. So we can't ask them to pay our solicitors fees to work on a contract that would protect us. They would obviously have to get their own lawyer to, to look at the contract from their side. She wouldn't be working on protecting them.
They, we would be released of all liabilities of anything that would happen on that field, right?
Yes, that would be...
Okay, that's, that's the main thing, right there, so there would be no, no legal ramifications for us as a township and/or the Cecil residents, uh,
Right.
Wouldn't be held accountable.
That's why we need the, that's why we need the big guns involved. So we, yeah, he would handle all the fundraising, there would be no taxpayer dollars put into it. Obviously, that would mean that the Armory Baseball would run it and be responsible for the scheduling of the field and the use of the field and stuff, we wouldn't want anything to do with, I don't say we don't want it, because it's still our property, but that's where he, they would have to get a lawyer, we would have to get a lawyer, and we'd write contracts that would protect everybody. Make sense?
Yes, as long as, as long as we're protected.
Yeah, that's...
I do have a question too.
Yep.
What's the duration of your season, like, how long do you, would you build?
Uh, so springtime through summertime, basically.
So, month, monthly, though, what's the month?
Uh, March through August.
Is there other kids that play down there, but obviously you'd have priority, but off-season, then the...
Yeah, we haven't seen anybody down there, um, using the facility, except one other program.
I'm talking about just pick up kids.
Oh, kids in the community.
Yeah, that's all.
Is that other team still playing down there you was telling us about?
I have no idea.
No.
They were as of last week.
Yeah, we, we reached out about that. Um, so they...
Excuse me, who's been taking care of it now?
They have. Hendersonville, yeah, they...
We've been doing, we did the infield repair, but right now you guys still cut the grass.
Right.
Around the field.
If you fundraise and take that over, you would take that responsibility, correct?
Yeah, I mean, there's a pavilion out there and a playground, so we would have to, you know, you guys would have to decide, do you want us to handle the pavilion kind of usage and that kind of stuff too? Or is it just exclusively the fields, that would be up to you guys to decide.
We would want to maintain, I, I would think we would...
Who takes care of Bucky, Bucky McPherson's pavilion over there?
We do.
Okay.
And we would continue, the use of that field would be the use of the field. We would can retain, I would think, and we can talk about this when we sit down. And once the contract's written, we'll have to come back to the board members and present it to the public. We just need the okay that everybody's interested in moving forward. And then, once we move forward, we can start the process of working on the contract and hopefully come back next month with something more, more finalized.
I was a little bit impressed when I went over there, I got pictures of the field over there. And it, it's looking pretty good, I mean, for what the pictures that I got.
Compared to what it was, yes.
Yes, well, I can't, I don't have nothing to compare it against, sir, but I...
Uh, we, we have before pictures.
Yeah, I have them right here, I can send them over, they're, it's pretty bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll send you the before pictures, yeah. Um, yeah, so does any other board member, do any other board members have any questions?
Are we looking to get water into that pavilion, and bar?
No, I don't think we plan.
I know they've asked for it for years.
I mean, we can try, but that's a separate...
We have water at the field.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a separate, we can try, that wasn't part of this, but we can try. Okay, thank you, so it'll be voted on when we get to the agenda portion.
Okay.
Um, moving on to resolutions, eighty-nine, twenty twenty-three, consider application twenty twenty-three zero zero one two for the Alto Piano Phase Six Revised Lots, six eleven through six thirteen subdivision plan, applicant Graziani Homes, location Breezewood Drive, Cannonsburg, R-one low dens, low-density residential zoning district. The planning commission recommended approval of this plan on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, this is the, uh, continued, uh, development of the Alto Piano Plan. Uh, they's, they're taking and creating lots, uh, I think this is, is this number six? There's two of them on tonight. Yeah, this is Phase Six Revised, and this is lots six eleven and then six twelve, six thirteen. So they're creating one lot to build a house, and then this is the remnant parcel. Streets and everything are in and been accepted, so this is just the way they've developed the plan. So, no comments, uh, all's good and ready to be considered for approval.
Why are they, they're consolidating them?
No, no, they're, they're subdividing. They, they took this big piece right here, and every time, so it's, it's big enough for three lots.
Okay.
And they've created lots six eleven, and then this is six twelve thirteen. So this will probably be subdivided again to build another house.
Gotcha.
So moved.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. Ninety, twenty twenty-three, consider application twenty twenty-three oh oh thirteen for the Alto Piano Phase Eight Revised Lots, eight oh four through eight oh six, Lot Line Revision Plan, applicant Graziani Homes, location Network Drive, Cannonsburg, R-one Low Density Residential Zoning District, the planning commission recommended approval of this plan on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, this is, uh, the same situation. Uh, actually here, they're making the lot a little bit bigger, it's a corner lot, uh, they're splitting it between, they're taking one lot. Uh, they're removing this lot line, and they're removing this lot line, and they're making a bigger lot, uh, for lot eight oh five, eight oh six, and eight oh four, eight oh five. So there'll be one new house here, and then this is just a bigger lot.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Ninety-one, twenty twenty-three, consider adopting the resolution for, quote, "resolutions for plan revision for new land development for the Silver Creek Residential Development Project, and transmit the planning module to the PADEP for approval." The Cecil Township Municipal Authority has approved the planning module.
So this came a little bit late, if you recall, the board has already approved this plan. Uh, this is the standard planning module that has to go to the, to the DEP. We reviewed it and recommended the board pass it along, the municipal authority has approved it. Uh, what you're doing is you're just, uh, signing the transmit a letter here and, uh, adopting this resolution tonight to transmit it to the DEP. It, it's your, just an update to your official sewage facilities plan, uh, to show that that property will flow into the Miller's Run, uh, treatment plant.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five zero. Ninety-two, twenty twenty-three, consider application twenty twenty-three oh oh one five for the Jan S. B. Walker Minor Subdivision, applicant Jan S. B. Walker, location Rising Road, R-one Low Density Residential Zoning District. The planning commission recommended approval of this plan contingent upon PAD, PADEP approval of the sewage planning module, I'm sorry, of sewage planning on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, this is a, uh, plan that's located up, uh, off of Rising Road. Um, what they're proposing to do, uh, this is Rising Road, and, uh, they're proposing to subdivide off Lot One B. Uh, Lot One A has an existing, uh, septic system. Uh, but Lot One B will be serviced by a grinder pump, and they will be transmitting the sewage to the, uh, Midway, uh, system. Uh, so, uh, we've been given confirmation that the, the sewage, uh, is, is approved, uh, but we've not seen any paperwork on that, we're just recommending that the board approve it tonight contingent upon receiving that paperwork. We won't sign the plan until we get it.
I'm making a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. Ninety-three, twenty twenty-three, can, consider extending the final approval of Phase One of the Silver Creek Development, an additional ninety days due to third-party permits not yet being issued.
Yeah, so Silver Creek, the board approved, uh, the master plan and approved all the phases for preliminary approval. Phase one, phase one was approved also, uh, which is just the extension of the road off the street and up in this direction. Uh, they're, they're waiting on their permit for, uh, this creek crossing here, uh, which a joint permit takes almost fifteen months to get right now. They, they applied for almost a year ago, they're still waiting on it, so, um, the requirement is that if, if you don't, if you don't post your bonds and do, do the developer's agreement within ninety days, you have, uh, you have to go back and ask for an extension. And that ninety days is not up yet, but bringing it to the board tonight to consider the reapproval of Phase One for an extra ninety days.
Is there a motion? Is there a second? I'm sorry.
I have a question, Dan, what percentage of this is townhouses, which single families do you know?
This is all single family.
Okay.
It's been moved, is there a second? I'll second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Frank, did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay, so four one, sorry. Um, ninety-four, twenty twenty-three, consider a full release of all remaining financial securities posted for the installation of public and private improvements for Fairfield-South Point Development as recommended by the Township Engineer.
Yeah, this, this, if you recall, the board approved all of the other, um, phases of this development, and this one was being held up because we were waiting to make sure that they got the pond approved by the DEP for conversion of the detention pond, uh, to its final form. Uh, that's complete now, we've been given the notice of termination, so there's no other money that needs to be held on the project. So we're just re, recommending release of the full securities, uh, related to anything related to Fairfield, because this is the last one.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five zero. Ninety-five, twenty twenty-three, consider payment to Stewart Contracting for grading repairs along Wind Dance, that's, missed, whoops, Wind Dance Drive to Stewart Contracting in the amount of four thousand dollars.
Uh, this was the, uh, amount that was approved by the board, uh, the project is complete by Stewart. If you recall, they were supposed to, uh, grade the property, which they did. Uh, they installed a drain along the toe of the slope, so this is complete. Uh, the next agenda item will be, if you recall, we broke this into two pieces. Stewart did the grading work, and then, uh, we were able to secure a price from a landscaping contractor to finish the landscaping. So, um, I'm recommending tonight payment, uh, to Stewart in final amount of four thousand dollars, which was the agreed-upon price.
Is there a motion?
Is this all about John Holt's house? I'm making a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Five zero. Ninety-six, twenty twenty-three, consider authorizing the restoration of grading on Wind Dance to Fairfield Landscaping in the amount of two thousand five hundred fifty dollars.
I'm making a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Ninety-seven, twenty twenty-three, consider application for payment number four for the work completed to date for the South Point Montour Trail Connection Project in the amount of sixty thousand three hundred forty-four dollars to Stewart Contracting. Do we have any pictures of that? Um, I'm gonna bring some in, if you haven't had the opportunity to see it, it is beautiful, for those of you that don't know. Uh, that was a grant-funded project that we worked on, um, uh, it was du, it was grant-funded over, well, it took us five years to get the grant, but it was approved about two years ago and, uh, and finished, or started last June, it is done, I think there's gonna be a grand opening June twenty-second. Um, it's beautiful, and I'm super excited about it, in fact, I had somebody say something about it to me the other day, so. Super exciting, so take a look if you get an opportunity, um, if not, I will remember to bring pictures in, sorry, moving on.
So this is just a payment to release the retainer down to five percent, there's some minor punchless items that are being taken care of by Stewart's, uh, but I'd recommend, uh, payment, uh, tonight as, uh, outlined, uh, with the contractor. Once we get their final paperwork and everything, we'll be coming back for one final recommendation. So, the recommendation is for payment number four in amount of sixty-three forty-four.
I'm making a motion.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. Ninety-eight, twenty twenty-three, consider application for payment number three for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, general project in the amount of three hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred dollars and five cents to Yule Construction Company.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is the third payment to Yule, uh, so, uh, a little bit under a million, uh, that they've requested for payments to date. Uh, we're holding ten percent of that, and, uh, less the amount, uh, paid already, uh, the amount due is three hundred and twelve thousand dollars, I'm sorry, three hundred and twelve seven hundred oh five. That's the recommendation.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Bill's approved this too, so...
Okay, thank you, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
I'm sorry, can we take that, you said no or yes, you said yes?
Say yes.
So four one. Ninety-nine, twenty twenty-three, consider application for payment number one for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, Site Utilities Project in the amount of sixty-eight thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars to Jay Stewart Excavating LLC.
Again, uh, this is a, uh, current payment, uh, the total contract was a hundred and seven thousand. Uh, there, we're holding five percent, because there's over fifty percent of the work complete. Uh, so the recommendation, we've not made any payments to date, is for sixty-eight nine thirteen. Uh, and Ron, I, I did speak to, I did text my engineer on this part of it. Uh, the authority requires a twenty-foot right-of-way? Twenty-foot easement?
Yeah.
So, the road's only forty feet wide. If we put the sewer in the berm, which we had it in the first place, we would have had to go back to the property owner to get additional easement. It was easier to bring the sewer into the road and not have to deal with that issue. It got us a little bit closer to our connection, but, um, you know, in, in the expedience of time, that's where it had to go.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I'll second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
Four one. One hundred, twenty twenty-three, consider application for payment number one for the work completed to date for the Cecil Township Public Works Facility, Electrical Project in the amount of eleven thousand two hundred sixty-five dollars and thirty cents to S.E. Schultz Electric.
Again, this is the first payment to, to Schultz, I opened up the room one. So payment number one, um, their contract is for a total of seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this is just the first payment, still holding ten percent as its standard. Uh, so the net amount due to them is eleven two sixty-five thirty. It's been reviewed by our office and by Bill Barra Russ.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That's it?
No.
Four one.
I do.
One oh one, twenty twenty-three, consider the purchase of two Western Star forty-seven X DD thirteen dump trucks with plow and spreaders at a cost of five hundred thirty-three thousand two hundred forty-eight dollars. This is a Co-Stars purchase with payment spread out over two years due to supply availability. Don, you want to?
Uh, yes, uh, these two units, Bill unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but these two units will replace, uh, a... Uh, yes, uh, these two units, Bill unfortunately couldn't be here this evening, but these two units will replace, uh, a two thousand and five Sterling unit and a two thousand and eight International that are currently in our fleet. Generally, trucks of this nature are replaced on a ten-year basis, so, uh, we're talking eighteen and fifteen years respectively, so. Uh, and because of supply chain shortages, uh, it is very difficult to get a truck all-in-one, uh, ready to go in one year, so. These payments will be spread out. Uh, the trucks will be available, uh, probably at the end of this year, twenty twenty-three. And then the outfitting, the, the, the dump body, uh, the hydraulics, all of that equipment will be installed in twenty twenty-four. And, uh, right now there is sufficient funds in the machinery account, excuse me, to cover the cost of both of these vehicles.
Tom, what were the sizes? I can't remember.
Uh, these are the, uh, the twenty-six thousand rear single axle.
Make a motion.
Darlene, do you have a question?
I was looking at Frank.
Are they single or double axles?
These are, these are single axle, eight-ton capacity.
Five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for two single axle dump trucks. Wow, did you do any homework on that, Mike? Uh, Frank?
No, I didn't. Just seems pricey for a single axle.
That's what I thought, too.
These aren't five fifties. These are thirty-two thousand GVW trucks.
Plus the plow and the bed.
Plow and bed, yes.
Is this complete? Totally? Everything?
Yep.
Or do they have to go back for salters and so on, whatever?
As I described, it's in two phases. The truck bodies, the chassis themselves will be done in the first year. The dump body hydraulics, plow and spreader will be added in twenty twenty-four.
But that price is trucks complete.
His same price.
Those are trucks complete, yes. The five thousand, five hundred and thirty-three thousand is for two vehicles.
What do you think, Frank?
It's pricey. We, we need them. I mean, we gotta replace them.
Do I have a motion?
I made a motion.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'll go along with Frank.
You're welcome to price them yourself, I mean.
I mean, the agenda, nevermind. One oh two, twenty twenty-three, consider a copier lease with Toshiba Business Solutions for a new copier for the administrative offices. Term is for sixty-three months at a monthly rate of four hundred and twelve dollars and eighty-nine cents. This is a Co-Stars lease. That also includes repairs should they need it, correct?
That is. That's all inclusive. And this is thirty dollars, uh, thirty-five dollars a month less than our current copier, uh, lease agreement.
Do I have a motion? Or do you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Uh, this is coming through Co-Stars also. Was there another bid out there? Or, we're just leasing this, right?
Yeah.
Would it be cheaper for us to buy?
No, because with a lease, they come and do repairs and stuff otherwise you have to. And co- with Co-Stars, that's the purpose of Co-Stars, you don't bid.
Twenty-six thousand twelve dollars over sixty-three months.
Yeah, I mean, keep in mind, this isn't your at-home printer. These are used every single day by township employees.
I, I realize it. Was it, was this put out for bid also besides Co-Stars?
No, because that's the purpose of Co-Stars, is you don't have to bid. You get the, the lowest price available. They bid it for you, yeah.
Okay.
That's why when you can go-
Just looking out for the taxpayers' money.
Right. That's why when you, that's why you go through Co-Stars is because you get the lowest bid across the state.
Okay.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five zero. One oh three, twenty twenty-three, consider the use of Hendersonville Field by J.R. Gard- J.R. Gardner representing the Cannonsburg Armory League for the purposes of Little League. And I wanna add to that, consider use of Henderson Field by J.R. Gardner representing the Cannonsburg Armory League and allow our solicitor to begin to work on a contract for that purpose.
So moved.
Wait, 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 wait. I think up until we have a contract signed, they should provide some kind of insurance.
They do anyways. They have to, they're using the field now. They have to provide proof of insurance.
Do you have insurance on everybody?
Yeah. Yeah, we require that of anybody utilizing our fields. Jack handles that for us.
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Five zero. Um, one oh four, twenty twenty-three, consider authorizing the Disenzio Personnel Specialist on behalf of the Department of Labor and Industry Office of Vocation Rehabilitation to provide Cana Macmillan students for summer projects from June twelfth through August tenth, twenty thr- twenty twenty-three. This is a continuation of the project started in the summer of twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anybody have any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five zero. One oh five, twenty twenty-three, consider the hiring of three part-time firefighters for a six-month probationary period. Whoops, that, I worded that wrong. That should say, consider hi- that's my fault, Mac. Consider hiring, uh, the hiring of a three-month, I'm sorry. Consider the hiring of three part-time firefighters at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars an hour. That hourly rate is what's probational. I don't want the firefighters to think that. And then should they pass that probationary period, it's like we do for police and public works. And should they pass that, the final rate will be twenty dollars an hour. Do I have a motion?
Mike, before we get further-
Sorry, I butchered the heck out of that, Mac.
I wanna get something straight. We do have an ordinance about sprinklers. It was on social media today that we had no ordinance. We do have an ordinance.
I was gonna bring that up at the end. So let's hire them and then we can let you talk about that during-
I'll second it.
Well, Mac was gonna, Mac, do you wanna, do you have their names that you can read out?
You wanna publicly read them?
Yes, now publicly. Sorry.
Uh, three firefighters, Travis McVeigh, Ryan Hess, ATSS, and Max Kalchaler. I can give you the spelling.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna need that spelling.
Uh, K-A-L-C-H-A-L-E-R.
Are any of you guys from Cecil?
Yes, Travis McVeigh is a resident, yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. Thanks, Mac.
Are you gonna scatter these through all three apartments?
Wait, what?
I'm sorry.
They're gonna be stationed like at all three different apart-
Yeah, we have a plan. Right now it's initially just muse, but, uh, we've been talking to the other two volunteer chiefs and, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm hopeful that, uh, well, I know one station is pretty excited about it. I'm hopeful we can get the third station on board to, uh, you know, because what we'll have is we'll have some part-time firefighters on duty. And we're, I don't know if you're familiar with our volun- volunteer duty shift program.
Yes.
But our volunteers will be on a daylight shift and they, you know, they may very well be working with one of the part-time employees. If that's the case, we can put, you know, let's say there's three or four people on, we can put a couple folks in each fire station.
Good.
Which is beneficial depending on, you know, where the incident may occur.
Um, okay. Um, one, one oh six, twenty twenty-three, consider pickleball stri- pickleball striping of tennis courts in Cecil Park. I actually added this agenda item after hearing from a significant number of residents about an interest in pickleball courts in, um, Cecil. We don't currently have any and as I'm sure you remember, the cost to just repair the tennis courts was astronomical. So this is kind of a two-fold ask. I know Bill had expressed his concern. He didn't really want the tennis court striped for pickleball. But seeing as it's going to cu- take a little bit of time for me to pull together some grant funding for actual pickleball courts, I thought maybe this was a temporary solution. Uh, we wouldn't change the nets. I know pickleball nets are different than tennis court nets, but it would just be in case somebody wanted to come down and play. I don't know what your thoughts are. It's just a suggestion, um.
My feelings are no.
Okay.
We have a beautiful tennis court there which gets used a lot for tennis. And I think you're just inviting arguments. People are gonna wanna play pickleball and people are gonna wanna play tennis.
Well, it's not any different than two people who wanna play tennis.
What's that?
I mean, it's not any different than if some, it's first come, first served. So if somebody's down there playing pickleball, then you can't play tennis and vice versa.
There, there is more and more of an interest of this, you know, over the past five, ten years, I've noticed, amongst different communities.
They had a massive, in City of Washington, they had a massive pickleball tournament. Um, there were hundreds of players up there. I don't know if you know, but in Cannonsburg Borough, they have, um, pickleball courts up there. They actually have a pickleball league.
Doug McHenry does a great job with that over there.
Yeah. Um, it's everywhere and I, I'm not trying to disagree with you, Ron, but I see them used occasionally for tennis. I drove by on my way here, they were empty. Um, so I, I don't, I don't think it hurts, but a- again, I'm not hung up on it. So whatever the board wants to do, I'm fine with.
I make a motion. We go ahead and stripe them.
Is there a second? I'll second it. I'll, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 No.
So it passes three, two. One oh seven, twenty twenty-three, consider the Board of Supervisors' minutes from the Monday, May first, twenty twenty-three, regular monthly meeting.
I have something to say about that. Not really the minutes themselves, but stating in the main meeting minutes, concerned citizen, his name was Terry Live, that addressed the board regarding the Cecil Township Laughing Stock Facebook page. He offered his opinion of the page and stated he has three IP addresses in his possession that he can turn over to the authority. In, he, all five supervisors, including myself, never have left what happened when Terry Live approached the podium and was prohibited to speak without giving a correct name and an address. It wasn't until after he spoke, the Chairman Fisher asked him for his name when he started to walk away with no address. I found out later that Terry Live is not his correct name and I feel members of this board knew that, but said nothing and let him to go ahead and speak. Uh, I was somewhat shocked at the tone of the message and even though Chairman Fisher didn't request his name at the, in the address, I should have. Upon leaving the meeting and seeing two supervisors at his, this person's side, I felt that this, it all was said at that point in time. While procedures were not followed, it appeared to be another orchestrated event for all to witness. His idle threats of twenty-four hours and going to the authorities were meaningless and made everyone a part of the ruse looking silly, including the two supervisors chatting with him after the meeting. His name was Terry Tackett. It was not Terry Live. He gave the wrong name, didn't give an address to Carol. And those were in the minutes and that is really against the ordinance, the Pennsylvania ordinance.
First of all, there's no PA ordinance related to minutes, but second of all, there's no PA ordinance related to minutes. But second of all, I do, I do apologize. At the exact same time he walked up, my house alarm started going off. So I did take a second on my computer to text my children who were home and make sure everybody was okay, so I did miss his initial coming up to the podium. Um, I don't think there was any secret as to his identity. He's been here before to speak.
I've never seen him attend this meeting and all while I was videoing.
That's how I met him for the first time, was here at a township meeting. Um, I take offense. I did talk to him, if that's what you're saying. I, I talked to-
Well, I take offense.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish. I listen to you. I did talk to him, but I talked to a lot of people. I didn't plan that, if that's what your accusation is. I don't think Supervisor Fleer did either. He came up like everybody's allowed to do and had his three minutes of public comment. Quite frankly, I haven't thought about it for a second from the time he left that night, um, because if I spent all day looking at what's, or worrying about what was said on social media, I'd never get anything else accomplished. So my advice to you is, first of all, I will say publicly, I didn't orchestrate that. I didn't know he was gonna come and speak. I can't speak for Supervisor Fleer. I did go back and talk to him. I apologize that my house alarm was going off at that exact second. Um, but I think that you should be cautious in coming to a public forum and addressing things like that, making straight-out accusations about two of your fellow board members.
I don't, I didn't make straight-out. It's on a video. It's, it's on, it's on a video that, that was videoed immediately.
You sat here tonight and you said that we orchestrated that. You have had plenty of opportunities, I said to-
It's too bad that it didn't show the video after this was all over when you walked back. That's all I have to say.
I, I did, I did talk to-
Because I figured that was your whole theory motive.
I did talk to-
We're not allowed to talk to somebody after a meeting?
Yeah, you're allowed to go back there.
So what are you bitching about?
All right, you know what I'm bitching about. I've been accused for how many years and I was just-
Was it you?
We're not getting, stop, stop. We're, stop, stop. We are not going to get into a, the Facebook page that is not run by the township at a township business meeting. Darlene, do not come to board meetings and make accusations of board, to board members. I, we don't do it to you and we're-
He just accused me of saying that I run it.
We don't, I, I don't do it to you and I don't want you to do it to me.
I'm good.
Period, moving on. Anybody else?
No, you're not.
Is there a motion on the monthly minutes? I'll, I'll second it, but Carol, will you correct his name to say Terry Tackett? Thank you. That, again, as I said last month, which I got reprimanded by a member of our audience for saying this, that was a simple email to a township employee to get that corrected or a email to me or a phone call to me or a text to me and that would've been corrected in the minutes. Um, but again, you chose to make a public spectacle of it, so, easy fix. Um, moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Passes five zero. One oh eight, twenty twenty-three, consider the general fund invoices from May first through May thirty-first. Is there a motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Five zero. Um. So I have a couple things I wanna talk about.
I do too. I have one thing also. Go ahead.
You can go first.
There, there's, uh, several residents that live near, in, in the intersection of Oak Brook and, um,
Furwood.
Furwood Drive. And, uh, they, they've been asking us to consider a stop sign there. Uh, the, the, the i- intersection, um, is, is very hard for them to s- to pull out of that intersection and not, um, they, they just feel it's not safe pulling out of the intersection. They said there'd been a lot of near misses and, um, even kids trying to cross there. Um, I, I'd asked, I asked Gateway to look at that and I asked the, the police chief to go up there. I think he did or he sent some officers. Um, the, the, the police agree that it's, it's a vulnerable intersection right there and a stop sign would be appropriate. He, I, I think that's his, um, opinion as is ours. And, um, asking for us to consider installing a stop sign.
Is that, um, entering or leaving the plan, Tom?
It's up-
Coming up or leaving that?
No, it's Furwood, it, it, that's a long sh- um, Oak Brook's a long street, way at the top where the keys at the top.
I know where it is.
It's, um, I don't know what you mean by leaving the plan, by Muse Bishop?
Well, I mean, there's only one entrance and exit to it. It, the placement of the stop sign.
This is way up at the top of the plan. It's, it's nowhere near the entrance.
But as, if you're leaving, coming down Furwood, does it intersect, it intersects with another road?
With, with Oak Brook.
Oak Brook, yeah. You're saying leaving Furwood out onto Oak Brook?
Yes. I thought you meant on Muse Bishop.
No.
Um, the only concern I have, Tom, is that this wasn't put on the agenda, so the residents that live up there don't really have the opportunity to know about it in advance. Um, we probably should've thrown it on, you probably should've had it as an agenda item, so do you wanna temporarily approve it pending, and then approve it formally in July? I'm just concerned that once we put it there, then we have residents who didn't actually want it to come and yell at us for putting it.
Does the chief have input on it? Is he okay with it?
Yeah, Sean, do you have an input?
Sean, you okay with the stop sign being placed at Furwood and Oak Brook Drive?
Happy with any stop signs. It's your determination if you guys wanna put it there.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like he's opposed to it, so, but now we have to open it up for public comment, so that's gonna be one oh nine, twenty twenty-three. Um, does anybody in the audience before, we, we have to take a double vote. We'll have to vote to add it to the agenda and then we'll have to vote to approve it. So does anybody have any, anybody in the audience have any public comment related specifically to that stop sign? Okay, so, uh, the board members, I need a motion to add, adding that stop sign to the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that added it to the agenda. Now we need a second motion to actually vote on the item.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So that will become one oh nine, twenty twenty-three. Um, okay. Yeah, yeah, one oh nine and then one ten. Carol, you all good? Thank you. Um, so look. Um, so look, I hesitate to say anything because I have some really good things to share about this, so I'm just gonna say this one more time this month. I am asking all the board members to do what, what I do. If you have an issue with something that a township employee does, specifically the minutes, the general fund invoices, before you come out to a public forum, please have a conversation with your fellow board members or the township employee themselves before you bring it to a public forum with a speech. I'm not saying you don't have the right to bring it out to the public. You obviously do. That's First Amendment right to free speech. But you owe it to the township employees not to publicly embarrass them before you ask the simple question or ask for a simple fix. That's all I'm saying. Moving on. Um, I just wanna, for those of you that haven't heard, I'm sure you've all heard, we had a terrible fire in Cecil Township last week. Um, it was awful. That we are, they are collecting donations, both monetary and um goods, goods and services. If you have any interest in that, we can direct you in that. But I just want to say something. There's a man in this room specifically that shined that day. Well, there's actually a couple of them, but we're gonna talk one about the first one, and that is the guy sitting right there. I had the opportunity to go over to that fire and watch him in action, and we owe him all a gigantic round of applause, because not only was he in- not only was he in control of the entire situation, but you could see, there were eight different fire companies there, three from Cecil, Fairview, Upper St. Clair, North Trevane, um Peters Township, who am I missing?
Shorters.
Shorters. Um, thank you. And the way that the men from those departments respected our fire chief was inspiring. They listened to him. Yes, chief, what do you need, chief? What can we do to help you, chief? Absolutely amazing. We are beyond blessed to have him in this township, and I want everyone to know, everyone to know in the township that how hard he worked that day um to keep those, to keep things under control. So thank you. And managed to have the media and everybody else, you know, his management of it was amazing. Um, I also want to say thank you to our volunteer and paid firemen. They were phenomenal that day as well. It was very hot. Um, it was a lot of work, and their work together was obvious. Their respect for Mac was obvious. Um, we are go, I intend to ask the board in a second um to publicly thank them as well. So they were phenomenal, so thank you to our volunteer firemen. Our police department was there, our police chief was there, as well as um two of our officers kept rotating through. They did a phenomenal job as well. Huge thank you to them. They kept everybody safe, kept everybody. There's another man in the room. Stand up. You know who I'm looking at. That guy right there. Dan Miller. Dan Miller is with South Ridge EMS. He was there the entire duration of the fire with his EMTs. He had, not only was he taking care of the firemen who came out of the, the fire with health-related issues, but he had drinks and cooling packs, and he kept rotating through. We don't give him a big enough budget. Like, I witnessed that day personally. I think Supervisor Fleer did as well, as other people. I intend to advocate for more of a budget for him, because at their expense, they were there. They were there taking care of our firemen. They were there with their own supplies. They didn't, they had the stretcher, they had their ambulance ready to go. The teamwork that happened that day, um, yes, there was a significant loss, but let me tell you, it could have been a heck of a lot worse. Um, and I saw that myself. So please go out and tell your neighbors how awesome all of these people are, and I literally cannot thank you enough, but specifically these three chiefs right here, Chief Okavinsky, Chief McMullin, and Dan Miller from South Ridge EMS. Phenomenal. We are lucky, so.
Thanks.
I mean it. One more thing, and then I'll let you go.
No, no, I want, I got something.
Oh, go ahead. You want to talk, no, you want to talk about that, because I'm moving subjects.
Go ahead.
One more thing, and it's quick. Um, I just want to say thank you also to Jason Ortiti, who is not here. He's our state representative. Um, we had a little hiccup, as you will call it, with um PennDOT, shocking, I know, um, related to School Street. For those of you that aren't aware, Supervisor Agizio now has been advocating for years to have School Street straightened out. They took over, the school district took over that post office, and it still has that dog leg. They'd been battling with the PennDOT since September, right, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, since September, over an HOP permit. Um, and it was looking like School Street was gonna get bumped another year, because they couldn't, we could not get an HOP permit. I made one phone call to Jason Ortiti's office, and less than a week later, we had the HOP permit. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, but School Street is moving forward this year.
Yeah, the school district has bid the project. They're now gonna be able to award it.
Yeah, which is great. That, when I tell you that would not have happened without Jason Ortiti, I mean it. That would not have happened without me being able to pick up the phone and call Jason um and find out what's going on. We were literally trying to move the road fifteen feet, so we weren't trying to like move an entire road far. But um, I want to say thank you where a thank you is due, and he is absolutely due a thank you. So if you see him out in the community, if you want to send him an email or phone call, thank him. He was great, too. Um, and, and I'm done. I'm done thanking people, at least for tonight.
I just want to know, when are we ever, ever gonna complete the Poly Road?
Are we ever, oh.
They built a turnpike, and we haven't done that road yet.
There's ex, there's extenuating circumstances, you know, and you know, we are very close.
But I mean, we, we have to, but these people all live up there. You gotta travel that. It's over two years. Over two years. Do we get braces on the wall?
Uh, we get the wall easement sign, Mr. Itzki sign.
That's not even put out for bid.
Well, but, but Ron, we, we can't put something out the bid. We can't work on-
It's been two years, Dan.
Well, I, I don't, I don't control people's property, and I can't tell them what they have to do with it.
I will take responsibility for that, as you know, and I hate to do this publicly, but um, we'll just say there is a person involved in the project with alcohol-
I, I understand that.
Hold on, hold on. That is gravely ill.
I understand that.
And so we are trying to be cautious of their family situation before we're pushing on things. So we are close, but I don't want to say more for respect for the family, but, but please, like, this is not us stalling, this is not us dragging our feet, we're walking uncharted territories and just trying to be respectful of the family who has a family member who's gravely ill. That's, that's what I'll say. So we are close. In fact, Dan and I talked about it earlier today.
Yeah. We're ready to put it out the bid, Ron. We just need the final blessing on the, on the second driveway, and Joe's got everything ready to yell, so.
But the wall can go out for bid, then.
What's that? That's what we want to do. We want to bid the wall in the, uh, in the, in the grading work. I have these up to the wall sign this morning.
Right. We can't-
Still, it's been two years.
Right, Ron, but it's somebody's property. And not only is it somebody's property that we're wanting to change, but the person is dealing with a very significant health issue.
I, I know about that. I understand that.
Forcing them to talk about a driveway when they have significant life and death issues that they're dealing with is not a top priority of the township. And I'm sorry, I will die on that hill, like, for lack of a better way to put it. But like, I am, I'm going to continue to be cautious of their family, family situation. Anybody else from the board before I open it up for general public comments? Okay. I'm gonna open it up for general comments and questions. Nobody? Okay. This meeting is, oh.
I have something.
You can come to the podium. You just have to state your name and address for the record.
Aye. I'm Veronica Cross, seven twenty-one, Wabba Drive, McDonald. Um, I got this nice little letter the other day in the mail from um our code enforcement officers. And he sent it to me at regular mail, and again, certified mail, same day. Waste of our taxpaying dollars. Um, the address that he has, is it even the address of the garbage that he speaks on here about? He said, I have a mattress in my backyard. The only one I have is in my bedroom. It is not in my, nowhere. And what he's pertaining to is the neighbor. So if he's looking and saying, oh, wow, yeah, there is that, why can't he tell what address it is?
So did you call Mr. Barron's and ask him?
No, because I know three other people that this has happened to, that the things did not belong to them. And they called. So apparently, he didn't fix it, because that was in the spring. This just happened a couple of weeks ago.
Can you leave that with me, and we will get it corrected for you?
Well, the correction is, he needs to know that send this one out first, regular mail. Okay, but do your homework. Make sure it's the person who has the garbage. Not somebody's neighbor. And then on here, it says, this has been brought to the attention of this office for area residents. Your neighbors aren't turning you in. They know what address you have. If my neighbors turned me in, sure wouldn't be for a mattress.
So let me clarify something for you. So he doesn't go out looking for code enforcement issues. That's the policy of the board. The policy of the board is that he responds to complaints. So there was somebody that called down and spoke to Mr. Barron's.
Maybe it's someone riding around looking for stuff to send down to him.
It may have been. But to me, this is an easy correction. We can, if you just leave it with me, we can talk to Dawn. We will talk to Mike tomorrow and make sure that the address is-
But here's my thing, though. I know he's doing, doing his job, but if he would have went to the address that he claims it was, he would have saw there was nothing in my backyard. Frank has pictures of the mattresses in the neighbor's yard. I have nothing in my yard, nothing. So why didn't he send out the first letter, wait for a ten-day, somebody not to do anything, then go certified? Why waste all this money sending stuff out to people who don't even pertain to?
I can't, like, again, he's not here, so I can't answer that question. But if you give us the information and your contact information, we will look into it, and we will get back to you and, and get you the answers that you're looking for. And we will get it corrected for you as well.
Okay, well, I really want to know the answer to it. I will leave it with you. But I wasn't even gonna take the registered letter. I was gonna let it come back, but who would have known that it even came?
Right. Okay. It's an, it's an easy fix. So if you just wanna, if you want to give it to us, we, we will get it taken care of for you.
And you could possibly tell them, too. Most of us have been up on that hill for over fifty years. We know the policies and the codes and all that stuff that is there. We don't need someone sending us mail to get rid of something. We already know that.
I mean, again, he's just enforcing the ordinances that are already in place, so somebody would have had, and it is the policy of the board, and he is well aware of that.
Well, isn't his policy to look up and see exactly who lives at that address before he mails it out?
Again, I don't want to speak for him, but let me, let us look into it, and we will get back to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is there anybody else?
Yes. I have one other question. And I happened to look at the May eighth check run, and I see on air where Fairfield Landscaping has done some work on Klinger Park. Uh, I came down Friday uh to find out, but there was nobody here to answer it, so I'm just asking a question. Do we have the three soccer fields rented out-
Yeah.
-this year?
Yeah.
In, how much money? Are we gonna, I know last year that you said the three soccer fields, and that was motion sixty-five, twenty twenty-two, uh, to second and prove a one-year contract with Fairfield in the amount of eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents?
So last month, we voted on approving Fairfield. Was it, it was last month. Last month, we voted to approve authorized Fairfield, Fairfield up to, I think, nine thousand dollars. That was for the entire year. Um, so, and I, again, don't have that motion right in front of me, but there, it was definitely last month. We have them rented the op, the opposing days that Cannon Mac Soccer is not using them. So Cannon Mac Soccer utilizes Klinger, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, because I cannot remember all of this, but I think Cannon Mac Soccer uses Klinger Monday, Tuesday, Saturday morning, and Sunday afternoon. And then they are rented right now by Beadling and by a lacrosse, I think, um, group. Is that what it is, on Friday nights? I forget. By Beadling Soccer on Monday, Tuesday nights, and some fill in on Saturday and Sunday.
So what is the bottom line, as far as what monies are coming to the township? Being that last year, we spent eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven. Did we get that back?
I can't, I mean, I would think so, but I don't have it in front of me. Let me say this. There's going to be, I think you're under the impression that recreation costs the township zero doll, should co, should cost the township zero dollars. I wholeheartedly disagree with that.
No, no, I didn't say that. I, I'm just going according to the motion that was done in twenty twenty-two, when we uh did the contract for Fairfield Landscaping with eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. And in that video, at that time, you, you yourself stated that we will get that eleven thousand, four twenty-seven back, and then some. Then you made a comment about uh them spending uh, uh, a hundred dollars an hour for playtime on a field, and South Point spends, they, they charge five hundred and fifty dollars an hour for playing. I was just wondering, where in our budget-
Okay.
-or where in our check runs, does it show that we're getting monies from? I, I'm just asking a question, because-
Well, so here, again, I'm not trying to be argumentative, but here we go again. Like, you could have asked me this prior to tonight, and I could have very easily sent you the documentation.
And then with, with the thing on, as far as uh the check run, I just wondered, this fifteen hundred and sixty-seven dollars that we owe Fairfield, I was, this just came up as far as the eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven that we had a contract last year. I'm not questioning-
The fifteen hundred, wait, back up. You're talking about multiple different things. So the fifteen hundred dollars that we owe Fairfield on here, isn't related to-
Yeah, that's field one, two, and three. All, all three of them-
Yeah.
Is five twenty-two each.
Hold on. So back up. So Beadling has consistently rented Klinger on the nights that Cannon McMullin Soccer does not utilize the field. So every six months, Jack, Dawn, usually me, we sit down with the head of Cannon McMullin Soccer, who right now is Tom Irwin, and we say, what do you want to utilize the field? And they do improvements. So they pay for the um porta-potties up there, they do the line striping up there, the nets up there owned by Cannon McMullin Soccer Association. So it's kind of like what I talked about in the meeting with J.R. Gardner. They don't necessarily pay the township, but they maintain the field in trade. So they do those things in order to utilize the fields on the nights that they use them. Beadling does not provide any sort of facilities, bathrooms, garbage, anything like that, so they pay us a fee. That fee is two hundred dollars. Um, and, and we get it at the end of the season. So they have started using it middle of March. I have those dates at home. Middle of March, and they will pay, they used it tonight for their um tryouts. So they will pay us at the end of the season. We got two checks from them last year. It was shortened in the spring, because remember, we had that little bit of a battle with Cannon Mac Soccer, so they got, it was a little bit shortened in the spring. Um, but they rented it again in the fall, and we got a check at the end of fall. And then we will get a check at the end of spring. And I can get you these exact checks and the amounts and all that kind of stuff, if that's what you're looking for. Hold on, because the one that you mentioned is from, the Fairfield agreement is from twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
Let me look at our last month's minute, last month's minutes, because I'm pretty sure that um, that it was either last month or the month before, because we, I actually pushed back on Fairfield. Fairfield gave us a quote, um, I want to say in February, and it was ridiculous. So I talked to Bill, and I talked to Dawn, and I sent them an email that said, thank you, but no, thank you. We're gonna move, we're gonna bid it out to somebody else. And they came back, and they lowered their quote um to a more acceptable level. And so that was what was on the minutes, but why can't I find the agendas? Why? I apparently don't spend enough time on our own website. Um, hold on one second. And I can tell, but again, this is what I'm talking about, Darlene. Like, you're bringing it here instead of sending a quick email and getting that answer. If you, if you weren't satisfied then with the answer, I would understand why you weren't bringing it here. But-
It was just a question as to whether or not eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars, we said we would, we spent out last year, do we get it back? I just figured that'd be really easy to figure that out.
I would say we probably got ninety-five percent, but again, I can get you the exact amount.
Because you could remember, whenever we talked about, uh, we had a very, a whole lot of interest in all of this. Uh, you had a very interested party when we had this discussion. And I just-
We still have an interested party. I'm actually, I have a meeting with them, which I was gonna tell you about, um, mid- June.
Well, there's rumors out there, too, but I'm not gonna start no rumors, right? Because I was asked the same thing. Go ahead, laugh, Ron.
I don't know what, there, there's no truth to rumors. I mean-
I don't drive around the township and cause trouble like you do. I'm bringing it here- I'm bringing it here, so it's.
I apologize. Bear with me one second. I'm trying to find it quickly. Oh, here it is. Um, consider authorizing Fairfield Landscaping. So, this would have been at our April 3rd meeting. Consider authorizing Fairfield Landscaping to provide weed services for Klinger not to exceed $6,000, and you voted for it. So, this was for this spring season.
Okay.
Are you all good?
Yeah, because like I says, I seen this on May 8th, and I was just wondering as to whether or not, is, is this just them weed killing and fertilizing and so on and so forth? But our Public Works is doing the mowing?
Yes. They man, they maintain the mowing at all of our parks, including Klinger. Yes.
And we are getting something back as far as people renting?
Yes.
So, that it's not all, it's not on all of our taxpayers' backs.
Right, but you have to understand, like, we don't, we allow the children in our community that play soccer to utilize those fields more than we rent them out. And I am quite okay with that because that is the purpose of township recreation. So, we can't throw Cannon-McMillan Soccer off of those fields in order to get more rental. We could get, we could sell the property. We could get rental seven days a week, but then we would be kicking off the kids in our own community who utilize the fields. That doesn't make any sense. So, like, we are going to.
Is that the reason we broke the contract with Cannon-McMillan? Because they weren't fulfilling the contract?
We, yes, we broke the contract. So, as I've told you for months now, I'm actively pursuing partnerships and grants for the development of that field, which includes um pickleball, pavilions, bathrooms. I am actively working on that. I think I've told you that for months now. Um, and I will say that here. I am actively pursuing grants similar to that grant that we got for the trail that runs through there. I'm working with those same groups of people. Grants don't happen overnight. Um, I, it took me seven years-ish to get that grant for the trail. Um, five to actually get turned down, and then two to build it. Um, so, it doesn't happen overnight, but I'm actively pursuing partnerships and grants for the development of Klinger Park, kind of like we brought to you with JR Gardner for Hendersonville Field. Jack and I were just talking about um future things to do in Lawrence Park for that field today. We were talking about it. Um, it's just, it takes time.
Everything takes time.
Unfortunately. I wish I had a magic wand, but I don't.
Two years, I'm wrong.
I don't know what that meant. But, okay, moving on. So, are we good with that, with Klinger Park?
Yes.
And I don't know what rumor you heard. If you want to talk to me about it in public or afterwards, I'm happy to talk to you about it. There's nothing to hide. I am actively pursuing grants and partnerships at Klinger. I mean, I don't have anything to hide there. So, that's, that's the way we're going to get it developed. I mean, the other choice for the board is to sell it, but then we'd be hurting our own um kids in the community.
Frank, what'd you hear?
Nothing.
I mean, I've heard about stuff about myself that I didn't know. So, you know, you can't believe every rumor you hear in the community. Go ahead. You, just state your name for the record, so I don't get yelled at.
Michelle Stonemark, oh, sorry. 40 North DePolly Road. I would just, well, I actually have a question first, and then I have a question for the board. Um, is there a way to find out when roads in the township are scheduled to be paved or repaved?
You mean by young blood or by our own?
By, like, on the schedule, you know, for the future. Like, there, I have some friends that live in a neighborhood um off of Muse Bishop, and they were just asking about when, if I had heard anything about when their neighborhood roads are going to get repaved.
So, unfortunately, we've, we tried years ago to do like a pavement maintenance type thing. We still keep an internal list. Dan and Bill and Frank work on that. Um, I hate to put that out publicly just because things do change, and emergencies come up, and then somebody's like, you said my road was going to get paved in two years, and then something happened, and it didn't. Um, but if they want to talk to Bill or Frank, either one of them can answer the question about when they think the need would actually come for that road.
Okay, that works. And my other question is, I was wondering when the supervisors put together and discuss the agenda prior to the meeting?
So, the agenda gets worked on probably starting a week and a half. Well, it's really worked on all month, but it, about a week and a half before we start compiling, we being Carol and Dawn, not me. Um, and any supervisors at any point. I'm not the chairman that controls the agenda. If a board member wants an agenda item on, it goes on the agenda. If that board member then wants to explain it, they have the right to do so. I'm not the chairman that says, no way, no how, don't put that on the agenda. Everybody, in my opinion, has the right to put it on the agenda. Um, and then you fellow board members talk about it. It gets circulated generally the Wednesday before a meeting. So, it comes to me first, and then I tell Carol, yep, it's good to go. Make sure we aren't missing anything that we talked about. And it goes out to the board members, usually the Wednesday before. So, they have from Wednesday until Monday. There are different variations of the agenda that will get updated. They always immediately get sent out. So, for example, Matt called me, my mistake, I missed an email that he sent to me about the three part-time guys. And he's like, Cindy, we didn't put that on the agenda. I'm like, oh, shoot. So, I called Dawn and said, this needs to go on the agenda. And then another copy goes out, and then it is generally posted, or it has to be posted Friday before 4:00 because there's a state law that requires 24 hours notification of the agenda.
So, all five supervisors have seen the agenda by Wednesday prior to the meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I guess because I'm a little irritated that I come to these meetings and that I have to listen to one of our supervisors, Mrs. Barney, talk about how with her big, long, prepared statements accusing you guys of stuff, and her, you know, big, long accusatory statement about Klinger Park to you, and zero effort put into the items, items that are on the agenda. Like, I think that time is not being well-spent, and that if anything should be looked into, those kind of items need to be discussed prior to this meeting so that they can be discussed publicly, so that we can all have some input. Because I'm sure I have some questions about Klinger Park that I can't think of off the top of my head. But, you know, it's just frustrating and frankly embarrassing to come to a meeting and have a discussion come up about Facebook. Like, I'm sorry, Facebook is social media. I could give two craps about what's said on Facebook, what people say about me on Facebook. I don't care, you know? And I feel, if anybody, it's just, the importance that that has been, the amount of times I've come to meetings and I hear about that, and that it's brought up, it's so frustrating to me that we're making this inimportant thing, like, the, this major crisis in our community. And it's, it's disgusting, and it needs to stop, all of it.
You were here at the last month's meeting to listen to it.
But you know that I watched it, right? Well, I wasn't, it doesn't matter if I was here or not. Just because somebody talk, I talk to Frank after meetings all the time. Does that mean that I'm in cohorts with him? Because I talked to Tom Cassiola last week on the phone. Are we in some kind of secret cohorts? No, it's, it's, no one's, there's no secret mission behind anybody's back. It's just, it's embarrassing, and it needs to stop.
Yep, you're right. And that didn't need to come here. That didn't need to come to the last meeting. I know I'm being.
Can you talk, can you talk into your microphone?
Sure. I know I'm being accused of being the admit on a laughing stock. Man, I'll tell you what, I am fantastic if I can do that.
Stop, timeout. The laughing stock is not a township run page. We're not talking about that anymore. Nope, moving on, moving on. We're not talking about the laughing stock. Moving on.
That's what she was talking about.
Look.